I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Boulder Valley Board of Education for Tuesday, April 25th, 2023. Board members may attend and participate by electronic means in regular or special meetings of the board in accordance with policy BEAA and state law. Board members who attend and participate by electronic means shall identify the location from which they are participating and those present. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Garcia.
Here.
Get Part.
Here.
Niznik.
Here.
Raj Paul.
Here.
Sargent.
Here.
Sweeney Moran.
Here.
And Board Member or Vice President Sweeney Moran, where are you calling in from?
Home.
Thank you. Zess.
Here.
Thank you.
We'll begin as always with the land acknowledgement. Board Member Nicole Raj Paul will read the land acknowledgement.
Thanks, Kathy. Boulder Valley School District resides and operates on land that is ancestral homeland and unjustly and illegally taken territory of the Ute, Puebloan, Arapaho, Cheyenne, Apache, Navajo, and 48 other tribal nations historically tied to this land, who have called this land home since time immemorial. We acknowledge the atrocities committed here, including the painful history of genocide, forced assimilation, and efforts to alienate the inhabitants from their homeland, supported by the policies of the United States government. BVSD is aware of the many indigenous peoples, past and present, and their dignified nations and cultures who care for the land with strength and resilience. BVSD recognizes the histories of the land in Colorado and the survival of the many nations that carry their oral traditions into the present. It is BVSD's responsibility to educate ourselves, our communities, and our students so we can embrace the wisdom and knowledge of indigenous peoples and actively stand together to address injustices. In offering this land acknowledgement, we affirm and honor the history, wisdom, oral traditions, and resilience of indigenous people and recognize the responsibility to care for and appreciate this land together.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for joining us electronically on BV22. We are glad to have you observe and participate in our meetings. I'd like to remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful civically engaged lives. At this time, is there a motion to approve our agenda? Moved by Kitty, seconded by Nicole. Laura?
Garcia.
Yes.
Get Part.
Yes.
Niznik.
Yes.
Raj Paul.
Yes.
Sargent.
Yes.
Sweeney Moran.
Yes, sorry, microphone problem.
Zess.
Yes.
Motion passes.
We'll begin as always with the superintendent's report. Dr. Anderson, good evening.
Thank you, Board President Get Part, members of the board. Thanks, everybody, for joining us this evening. Have a few things to update our board and community on before our student moment. Board members, as you may know, last week, our school district successfully sold around $187 million in general obligation bonds. Sale authorized, which was authorized by voters in our November election, will help fund district-wide capital improvements, including just addressing various critical needs to extend the useful lives of our school facilities and improving ADA access on our playgrounds, replacing New Vista, the 70-year-old school building, with a new building. We're excited about that, providing a new school for enrollment growth in Erie, more specifically within the Parkdale community, and expanding CTE opportunities for middle and high school students as part of our Grad Plus framework. The strong bids for these bonds that we received on the sale date are a reflection of the strong financial stewardship the Boulder Valley School District of our school district and the strong credit ratings that we've received in preparation for the bond sale, including a AA1 rating from Moody's and a AA+ rating from S&amp;P. And for those of you that want to learn more about our bond project, please visit our website at bond.bvstd.org to learn more about that. Board members, last week, we were really excited to have, I want to say, over 100 students and families that we gathered over the course of last week to have qualified for Colorado's Ascent Program. Board members, you'll remember at a presentation that we really see recently provided that this past year, we grew from four students, taking advantage of Ascent, to 40 and had over 100 people in attendance. Very exciting opportunity for students. If you earn nine college credits and maintain a 2.0 GPA, you're eligible to have your first year paid for, whether either at Metro State or Front Range Community College by the state. And so we hope that more students take advantage of that opportunity. A year of college is expensive, and it's great to be able to do that in a way that is free to parents. And so we're very excited and want to thank our parents and our students who participated in that reception. And Board members, last week, several schools, including Crestview Elementary, participated in BVSD's Bike Enroll to School Day. It's a good reminder for students, as the weather warms up, to choose alternative transportation options to get to and from school. A lot of great benefits, both for the physical and mental health of our students and for our environment. And on that day, Foot Hill Elementary also held its annual bicycle festival known as the Bike Bonanza. Students got to wash up their wheels in the bike wash, learn some important safety tips. And if you or your school haven't participated yet, no problem. National Bike Enroll to School Day is on May 3rd, so dust off your wheels and helmet. And Board members, it's finally time for our student moment. This month, all this month, we've been celebrating our students' efforts and sustainability within our student moments as a way to mark Earth Month. Tonight, we're excited to have students representing LMS Lewisville Middle School, even though I know that what I've been told is that there's several other Lewisville schools that have projects underway. Panthers for Climate Action at Lewisville Elementary School and Pirates for Climate Action at Lewisville Middle School are working to understand more about energy and the role they complain reducing the greenhouse gas emissions of their building. Students at Fireside are participating in the Renew Our Schools Energy Challenge and are doing an energy audit of their building. And many of these students have been working since long before the Marshall Fire came through their town to advance policies that advocate for climate action. Believe that Student Agency through civic engagement is giving them hope and helping their mental health as they face the daily realities of climate change. So it is my honor to now turn the floor over to our students representing LMS Pirates for Climate Action Club. And I will turn it over to you two.
Hi, my name is Caleb Forster.
And my name is Arthur Tauber.
We are from Lewisville Middle School and a part of Pirates for Climate Action.
We as a club have taken many different approaches to fight climate change, like painting murals, meeting with Lewisville officials, advocating for the bag tax law, the building codes law, as well as advocating for no idling and writing poems and articles and many more projects as well.
We have also advocated for a more diverse council with Jeff Durbin in City Hall. Many people from our club advocated for that with Jeff Durbin and Maxine Most.
Many of us also went to LES to hear about and comments on the distribution of the bond money coming from the bag tax law that we passed. Once we get that money, we're going to be putting it towards solar panels and decarbonizing our school.
We have also presented in front of city council for stricter building codes around for more carbon efficient homes in 2021. This was a huge opportunity for us, and we're so glad it passed. Many people in our club advocated for it. And also, like, we're young, but we still care about our community.
I've also sent out an email to the principal of our school as a response to our club's no idling protests, asking for no idling signs put up along BVSD drop-off zones. And LMS now does have no idling signs set up along the school fences and poles.
Our club also advocated for the bag tax, specifically House Bill 1162. We put that tax on the agenda and then got it passed. This bag tax is the one in Lewisville for 25 cents. And the other bag tax that was passed in Colorado, we didn't advocate for, but it had an incentive from the one that was passed in Lewisville.
Our school also sends out a magazine every month, and people from our club have used it as a way to share word of global warming and natural disasters. This ended up snowballing, and now not only people from Pirates for Climate Action are also using it as a way to share these important issues.
As you can see, our club's history has made so many different changes. Right now, though, we're working on the Rise Challenge. The Rise Challenge is a competition where we have to research and we have to research a natural disaster and then demand change from people in power.
And recently, in December of 2021, our community was hit by a devastating fire, and over 1,000 homes were destroyed and many more damaged. And we want to prevent natural disasters like this one from ever occurring in our community again.
As part of the Rise Challenge, we are required to complete a civic action movement. For this, we chose to decarbonize our school through various methods we just described. If we win the prize money, this will go to solar panels on our school. This will decrease our carbon emission output by 20 times.
This will also reduce the chances of another fire from occurring in this community again by decreasing our impact on global warming. And if another fire is to occur, it won't be able to spread as rapidly, or there won't be as much fuel for it to consume, so it won't spread as fast as the Marshall Fire did.
And we have a short clip from a video that we have for the Rise Challenge for you today. So this clip, we actually got it from our amazing teacher, Ms. Carmichael. She's our drama teacher, and we performed a play, and we got this clip from it. And we thought it fit really well with what was happening here.
Unfortunately, it's a bit glitchy, but thank you for your time.
Yeah, we did many different things. This has been a whole club effort. It's not just us. We have many people that have been all contributing to this Rise Challenge.
Yep. And there are also people from Panthers for Climate Action, as you guys mentioned, that are also helping out for this, not for the Rise Challenge, but for important issues like this one.
Thank you for your time.
And Board members, that concludes superintendent's comments. Happy to answer any questions.
Board members, any? I think I can speak on behalf of the board. That was awesome, and we really appreciate you coming and presenting, and hope you get the Rise Challenge. So keep us posted on that, but thanks for all the great work, and we'll look forward to following your progress. Anything else from the board? All right, thank you very much. You're welcome to stay, but you also owe me homework or whatever, so it's up to you guys what you want to do. We will now begin the public participation section of the board's meeting. Members of the public who wish to speak at tonight's meeting were asked to sign up prior to noon today by submitting the request to speak during public participation form that can be found on the BVSD website or by contacting the board secretary Laura Schaefer. Public participants have the option to attend the meeting in person or join and present their comments via Google Meet. The board respects the rights of the public to speak on matters concerning the operation of the schools. The board does not endorse the comments of any speaker and reminds all who speak that they are responsible for their own speech. Please know that this is a listening opportunity for the board, and the board does not engage in a dialogue or answer questions as part of public participation. The board needs time to consider the comments made and may include items on future board meeting agendas to address issues raised by our public and our community. To ensure that our meeting is conducted in an orderly manner, we ask that persons who address the board, one, confine your comments to matters that are germane to the business of the school district. Number two, recognize that students often attend or view our meetings. Speakers' remarks, therefore, should be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement that is unrelated to the business of the district or inappropriate for K-12 students. Please limit your presentation to two minutes. If you run out of time or would like to share additional information, you may email the board. You will see a yellow card when you have 30 seconds remaining. When you have 10 seconds, you will see the orange card. Please wrap up your comments. At the end of two minutes, a timer will sound and your microphone will be muted. We also have the timer right here so you can keep track of your time. We have several speakers this evening addressing non-agend items. I believe that the first speaker we have is Lily Collins.
There you go.
Hi, my name is Lily Mae Collins. I'm in third grade at Coal Creek Elementary School, and I'm going to be talking about why it's important to test the schools because of the smoke damage of the fire. I think we should test it because there's a lot of kids at a lot of the schools that could be in danger of this smoke damage. And I think even though we cleaned it a little, I think we should clean it more because I think it's not clean enough, and the fire can be very dangerous for the kids in the school. And I think that we should do it because I think it's really important that we do this because it's, I think that I just really wanted to use my voice in it and speak up to people, even if I'm really young. And when I was evacuated by the fire and when my house had smoke damage, we had to throw away all of our stuffies, toys, and books. So when I went back to pick up some of my big cat toys that I wanted to play with, I had to get out really fast because it was burning my eyes. So I had to get out really fast, and that was really stressful. And I think it's very important to test the schools. And I think other kids that maybe even weren't evacuated by the fire or still were should not lose all their toys, stuffies, books, all their, like, loving belongings, because I lost some of my really good things that I had when I was little. So I think it's very important to do that.
Perfect timing. Good job, Lily. Next, we have Laura Collins.
Hi, I am proud mother of Lily Collins, and I do not need this stepping stool. Okay, got it. Thank you. All right, y'all know me at this point. I look forward to the day where I'm not having to come and talk about smoke damage. Again, I'm advocating for BVSD to test the eight schools that were impacted by the Marshall Fire to ensure that all smoke damage and toxic toxins have been removed from the schools. I've spoken about the fact that there's 4,500 kids at these schools that we have found char in an elementary school within the last two months, and that school has had some remediation, but I don't know what that is. So that's why I'm here, and that's why Lily's here, because she sees me spending way too much time on this topic. So while BVSD has not sent any updates, and we are anticipating an update this week, I do have updates from the community. So that smoke damage petition is up to 395 signatures that is requesting BVSD to test the schools. Looking at you, Rob. We also have attended a, Superior hosted a roundtable with CBS News that had the governor, the senator, congressman, and state representatives there. And all of them were in support, and the mayors were all in support of the schools being tested. And Governor Polis even said that you might be able to tap into the excess funds that they have for the coronavirus in order to fund that testing and any potential remediation. And I'm trying to think what else. I think that's the main updates that I have. And then anecdotally, I've spoken to a doctor that's in that same parking doctor lot as Monarch, and they went into the doctor's office the morning after the fire and couldn't see more than two feet in front of him. So that will give you an idea of what Monarch looked like. It is also similarly constructed to a school. It's a medical building. And I just, again, I'm really worried about these kids in the schools, and I understand that we don't want to disrupt the school year. I'm hoping that you're going to address it during the summer break, but we really need to do better, and the community is starting to get frustrated at the lack of transparency. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Maxwell Fowl.
Good evening. Just to fix one thing here. This is just for you guys to be able to see. So, good evening. My nine-month-old son currently attends BVSD's Early Connections Infant and Toddler Care Center just up the road here at Arapaho Ridge High School. Last week, we got an email stating that due to budgetary reasons, you'd be raising the rates and cutting hours at the center. We then talked to the teachers at the school, and they let us know, found out that you were also cutting their staff childcare benefit. We're extremely worried that the, that we're going to lose the center and have to move our son to a new care facility, because, as you can see here from the math, the average salary of a childcare person or childcare teacher is $39,940 a year. And after you take out taxes and all of their benefits, you're down to $2,722 a month. Tuition is $1,965 a month. The tuition benefit that you're extending to them is about 15%, which takes that down to about $1,670 a month. The take-home pay after childcare is $1,389. That's a pay cut of 61%. If you think that you're going to be able to keep the center open and maintain at least 50% of the people with a 61% pay cut, you're crazy. We've already had to move our daughter three times in the past year and a half due to staffing and school closures in the city, and I don't want to have to have this happen to my son. Thank you.
Thank you. And feel free, if you want to email us the data that you have on there, so we could maybe see it a little more clearly. All right, that concludes our public comment for tonight. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is board communication. Board members, who would like to begin? Richard?
I want to thank the students that were here presenting. Thank you very much for your presentation. You're doing good work up at Lewisville Middle School, so thank you so much. And I also want to thank the young lady that was here trying to advocate for her particular school in terms of smoke mitigation or whatever they need to do. But I also want to mention that on last week, Tuesday, I attended the Spanish-language IEP workshop that was conducted by our great special ed department, as well as the Community Engagement Strategic folks, Bianca Gallegos, Dr. Gallegos was there. It was a well-conducted presentation. The parents learned a lot of information in terms of what the IEP process is and what to expect on the IEP, et cetera. And I heard that they're going to do some more particular workshops, you know, around the district, and it was just a wonderful presentation they did. And they invited partners to participate with them, like the Colorado State White Parent Coalition, Vos Lafayette Group was there. Natalia Alvarez did a great job in terms of her input to that. It was a great presentation that they conducted, and the parents were really well pleased in terms of learning more about the IEP process. That was kind of like a sight unseen for them because they hadn't participated in something like that before. So good work, special ed department and Michelle Brenner and our Dr. Gallegos and the folks that participated.
Beth?
Just like Richard, I too want to just appreciate tonight's speakers. Thanks, guys, for coming in and telling us about all the amazing work you're doing. Appreciate you sharing your experience with your young one, and I also appreciated the young lady who told us about her experiences at the fire mitigation efforts. Really appreciate that. It's great to hear from you all. So for my part, I went to the most recent BVSD Connects last week, I think it was on Thursday, and it was just great. If you haven't had a chance to come, check those out. It's really nice. It's part of our kind of ongoing efforts to engage with the community. It's a little different than this experience, a little less formal, and I think we actually have some really cool things come out of that, and I'm looking forward to future community connects and future ways to connect with the community and see what work we can do together. That's all I want to share.
Lisa, do you have anything?
Yeah, thanks. First, I don't know if Lily's still there, but I just wanted to say you did fantastic. And I have a third grader sitting next to me. When you said you were in third grade, he started cheering, and you know that he thinks you did great, too. So thanks for speaking to us. And then one thing I wanted to mention with the LMS presentation that was also great, I love that they are putting up those no puffing, no idling signs around their schools. I wonder if we could talk about doing some of that district-wide. I know we have policies about that across different cities and counties, and the more that we can do to limit that, the better. My understanding is that in Boulder, based on its size and the location of the mountains and our location in a valley, that this city in particular suffers a lot of negative effects when we have cars idling, and I'm sure it's not much better for our neighboring cities. So I would love if we could maybe consider taking up some of that work that LMS is doing and using it district-wide.
Nicole?
I'm going to echo the thanks to everybody that showed up tonight. Thanks for the hard work of all of the LMS students and trying to do what you can to make an effort on climate change and environmental impacts in your neighborhood. Thank you to the speakers. Last week, I had the privilege of attending the bond sale, which was a really exciting 90 seconds as bids were coming in. So if anybody gets that opportunity, highly recommend it if you have that much time in your day to squeeze out. I also had the opportunity to attend BVSD Connects once again. It is fascinating how every time we have these community discussions, what rises to the top is different. And so going to each of these, I think, is a really big value add for me as a board member, to hear what's going on in our community and just to be reminded that there's a lot of different perspectives across this district. Next, I just want to say I'm looking forward to our final board candidate forum this week. It's been a pleasure to attend those as well. As I've said over the past few board meetings, these past few months, I'm happy to meet with anybody that is interested and brave enough to run for this role, to serve with this group of folks. The work is good, so thank you for that. And, you know, after weeks and weeks of checking Tracer and seeing St. Verne Valley's school board members filing for their intent to run, I was pleased over the weekend, this long weekend, that we ourselves now have some folks filed on Tracer willing to take on this work, and I imagine that that is going to inspire others to do the same. And in these meetings I've had, I just want to say I am impressed by the quality of the candidates interested, their passion for the system, doing its best for the school district as a whole. And so I think good things are to come, and I will end with that.
I'll just add really quickly. I went to both of the BVSD Connects, the one that was at Columbine and the one that was at Creekside, and to kind of echo what my colleagues have said, it's, each one is different, and I think, I'm hoping that it kind of gets into our community's DNA to show up at these as we start going forward, especially as we start having to deal with some of the challenges of declining budgets and budget cuts and helping prioritize what our community thinks is really important and what we need to be doing to make sure that all our students are getting the best education they can in our district. As Nicole said, this Thursday, we're hosting our last forum for potential candidates. This one is a Zoom meeting, so we were hoping it might pick up a few more people. Goes from five to six, is that right, Laura? And people need to...
5:30.
Five thirty.
Yeah. People just need to reach out to Laura to get the Zoom link. So, by all means, that doesn't mean that if you haven't attended one of those that you can't run. Obviously, we will talk about deadlines. The actual deadline isn't until the end of August, but there's lots of rules and regulations around when you have to file and what you have to file and what the requirements are. And so, we wouldn't want anyone to get unnecessarily tripped up for missing something. And so, we're really trying to help. And I will send anybody who's interested to also to the CASB website because they have some really good information. That's the Colorado Association of School Boards. There's really good information about what to do if you're thinking of running for a school board. And so, we, as Nicole said, I think each one of us is open and willing to meet with anybody who wants to talk about what it means to be on the board, what the service means, talk about the deadlines, guidelines, all of that information. Because there are four seats that are open this next November. It comes really quickly after you have summer break and all of a sudden it's campaign season. So, I want to encourage everybody who's interested to reach out to us. And then, thanks to Randy, I participated in two radio interviews on SROs. One was on KOA and one was on KUNC. And we did one at Monarch. And I have to say, I continue to be really impressed with our security team. And I was a little nervous about doing it until Brendan Sullivan walked in the room. And as I said then, he always makes me feel like everything is going well, even if it's not. He's just so calm and knowledgeable and smart. And then, I was super impressed that the young reporter from KUNC wanted to follow around an SSA. And the SSA at Monarch is a rock star. His name's Steve. And I went into his room and he has this board that's like the size of that screen with all of the different tests that are going on and all of the different schedules. And he just exudes a huge amount of confidence. He shows up at every football game, at every basketball game. There's videos of him leading cheers. So, to the extent that people want to know more about our SSAs, I encourage you to investigate that. I learned a little bit myself because I feel like the decision that we made, people always ask, well, are you going to reconsider it? That's a community decision. But I feel like our SSAs are doing a really awesome job and really take their work seriously. So, I don't know what it's going to sound like when the interview comes forward, but I appreciated the, Randy introduced me to a new concept called the Shark Cage. I don't know if anyone's... The Shark Cage. It's kind of your four corners when you're going to be interviewed in the press and what your talking points are. And so, I thought it was an interesting description of being in a Shark Cage. So, anyway, I also felt really safe because Randy done the second interview was in the room. So, I would look nervously at him and wait for him to smile and nod for the answer. So, anyway, I think we are the only district on the front range that currently doesn't have SROs. And I think that we're doing a really good job of making safety and security one of our, not if, not one of, but our top priority for all our students. So, anyway, that's what I have to offer for today. And thanks again, Randy, and thanks again to all our safety and security team because I know that they're doing an amazing job. And I think we just forget that in our last bond, we had really, that was one of our highest priorities. You can't get into one of our schools without going through the AI phone. We've tried to make sure that our entrances are secure. I think we forget about that. We added cameras in the high schools. I think we may be looking at adding cameras in our middle schools. So, we really do take this seriously and I think we just take for granted all of the efforts that are going on behind the scenes. So, thanks to everybody for doing that.
So, next we have three information items on this evening's agenda. The first is the Sustainability Action Plan, April Earth Month update with Dr. Gita Carroll and Rob Bryce. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, President Gebhardt, members of the board and Dr. Anderson. I'm going to turn it over to our students and let them just run with this. You don't need any prep, do you? Excellent job. I think this just goes to show that this is an army leading this work. It's not just staff here in the ed center, but we have teachers, we have students, we have parents, we have community members, all leading this work. So, anyway, thank you for allowing us to present tonight. Tonight, we will be presenting on our goals outlined in our five-year Sustainability Action Plan. Joining me tonight is Dr. Gita Carroll, our Sustainability and Energy Officer, and Miles Hoffman, who is new to the district, somewhat new, our Sustainability and Energy Analyst. So, thanks to Miles for joining us. But before I guess started, in early March, BVSD received yet another national award. BVSD was presented the 2023 Best of Green Schools Award in the School System category, presented by the Center for Green Schools and Green Schools National Network. The award celebrates the hard work being done by our schools, campuses, and organizations to push the green schools movement forward. I should have put students in there. BVSD has been working for more than a decade to create healthy learning environments and experiences that equip all students and staff with the knowledge and skills to create more equitable and sustainable communities. The 2023 Best of Green Schools honorees represents a group of individuals and organizations who have done extraordinary work for the green schools movement. I want to personally thank Dr. Gita Carroll for her continued leadership in moving us forward in the right direction. And with that, I will turn it over to Gita.
Thank you very much. Good evening. All right. So, as a reminder, these are our guiding documents for our district around sustainability planning with our goals and visions of what we want to accomplish. We have had these plans in place since 2009 with our most recent update in 2021, and these plans are supported by board policy. So, this is the vision and mission of the Green BVSD Action Plans. We want to be all together for all students and the planet and making our strategic plan. These are the four areas that our plans cover. We know that it's not just about technical solutions. We need to address all four of these areas to fully address sustainability as a K-12 system. Each of these strategic priority areas has an overarching goal and three to five supporting goals. Each area also includes indicators and measures that staff use to assess our progress. So, this is a five-year plan with the end date of June 2026. I'm going to now walk through each of the priority areas and provide an update on our progress from the last year. So, the first area is leadership. The goal here is that by 2026, BVSD will collect and report consistent data at 100% of schools related to healthy, equitable, and sustainable school best practices. So, the first supporting goal in this category was to create an advisory group. So, we have our first-ever sustainability advisory group at the district level. This group was established in January 2022. The members are listed here. We have had quarterly meetings ever since that group was established. We also have a website where you can see our minutes and meetings, the committee charter, and the members involved. And it is the task of this group to oversee our progress and our work in the Sustainability Action Plan. The next goal in this category is to create a sustainability dashboard for each school. So, you can see in the upper left-hand corner that we do have a template that we're working. And we have one of these for every single one of our schools. And we're continuing to get the data as up-to-date and tight as we can before releasing, which we hope to do this next fall. Meanwhile, we've been sharing the sustainability snapshots with school by request as a useful tool, and this will be available on VisLab. And on the bottom right-hand corner, you can see our new Energy Manager dashboard that we're using to input all of our utility bills so we can track progress by school and by district, looking at our utilities. The third goal here is to update our operational policies. Most of the work here has been building documents in preparation for the bond to make sure sustainability goals and priorities continue to be reflected in the right places, such as our technical guide, contracts, and scopes of work. And the fourth goal is to create a professional learning plan to, for 100% of our staff. So, most of our work this year around education and training for staff was around the changes in compost industry. Those have happened community-wide. Also, in the leadership category, staff do continue to be invited to local, state, and national conferences to present on our work and sit on advisory boards supporting K-12 facilities. The next area is facilities and operations. So, the overarching goal is that we'll continue to pursue net-zero energy by reducing greenhouse gas emissions from our 2018-19 baseline by 14%. So, some big updates in this category include a new state-level required benchmarking for energy performance for all buildings in the state that are greater than 50,000 square feet. So, BVSD has 46 buildings that fall in this category. The first round of reporting was due December 1st and that covered 2021 data. The next round is due June 1st and will cover 2022. And this is going to be an annual effort that we're required to do every year. So, this first year, there was a lot of clunkiness on the state side and as all of us figured out how to do this reporting, but hopefully, moving forward, it'll be a pretty smooth process. Also, as Rob mentioned, super thrilled to introduce Miles at this new position, our Sustainability and Energy Analyst. Our energy manager, Jeff Medwitz, who some of you may remember, retired last March. So, since then, we've restructured and we're able to bring Miles on in January, already incredibly valuable, helping to get our utility data up to track, among many other things. And then, the third big news is that there is a lot of new funding available at the federal level to help support energy improvements in K-12. So, we're continuing to watch that and figure out where we might be able to take an opportunity of some of that new funding. So, I'm going to move on to the five supporting goals in this category. The first is to integrate green building principles into our bond and assessment process, which I've talked about a little bit already. Next is to maintain a 50% diversion rate. So, our diversion rate did take a hit this year. We were at 35% and this is really due because of the changes in compost. We had to scale way back on our composting in our schools. So, that was hard. That was the first week of school. We got that information about these big changes that were happening in the industry. But we've been working every week with EcoCycle in our schools to figure out how we continue to support zero-waste best practices and hope to bring that diversion rate back up. Next is to decrease water by 5%. So, we are about static with our water use. We have seen a decrease in our domestic water use, our indoor water use. But we will note that even though that stayed about static, the utility rates have gone up quite a bit, which you probably all know as people living in this community, that water rates have gone up. So, continuing to see what we can do to drop those water use and associated water rates. The next goal is to reduce transportation emissions by 25%. And we've made quite a bit of progress here. Consolidated routes in our fleet from 300 down to about 200. A lot of this was due to bus driver limitations and then the move to hub busing, which parents I hear have generally accepted the change to dropping kids in communal locations. And this has led to a drop in fuel consumption as well. There have been 30 older buses removed from our fleet, older diesel buses, and we now have new two, new propane buses and six new electric buses. So, that's exciting. And the final area here is to decrease energy use intensity to 55. So, we are continuing to decrease our energy use. You can see in that top chart that that goes down. And we do know from our new state benchmarking that's required that BVSD schools are below the national average in EUI compared to other education facilities. Unfortunately, same news here that utility, gas, and electric costs continue to go up. So, our costs in that area rise even though energy use continues to go down. All right. This next area is curriculum and instruction. The overarching goal here is that all students at every grade level will have meaningful and developmentally-appropriate experiences to develop sustainable, sustainability, knowledge, values, and behavior. So, the first sub-goal here is to identify where education for sustainability topics can be integrated into common instructional units. So, our staff and the curriculum and instruction team have done a lot of work this year to walk through our science and social studies standards, starting with those two, to see where there are overlaps with sustainability. They've noted those areas with a little green leaf, I think. And as they are building out the instructional website that will be available to teachers, teachers are going to be able to see where standards overlap with sustainability. And it'll also let us know where we have maybe gaps in terms of sustainability throughout our standards. The next goal is to support and track professional learning by school leaders and teachers related to education for sustainability. So, I would say our partners really continue to do an amazing job in offering professional development opportunities to our teachers. And as we build out the sustainability and curriculum connections, we'll have more opportunities to identify opportunities for additional PD needs. And the third area is to develop formative articulation agreements with our strategic partners. So, using the partnership portfolio, BVSD's partnership portfolio, we look to see anybody who went through that process that did work related to environment, sustainability, science, water, anything that we could think of. So, there are 28 partners that met that category. We all met about a week ago to come together to give them an update in what we were doing around sustainability in our curriculum. We're getting information from them about the number of students they reach, which schools, number of presentation and topics, and also continuing to align their work with our standards. So, great work happening there. And, you know, our community is chock full of partners doing amazing things with our schools. I continue to be blown away by. I'm going to name just a few, but hate, almost hate to do it because I know I'm going to forget some, but EcoCycle and Thorn, the Water Festival is something many of our students get a chance to do, Cowood, Garden Table, 8th Graders Go to NOAA, Classrooms for Climate Action, and the list really goes on and on. We're so lucky to have these great organizations working with our students. All right. And the final area is climate and culture. So, by 2026, our goal here is that all faculty, staff, students, and families will have regular opportunities to experience sustainability and action. So, the first goal here is that all of our elementaries will have green schoolyards and outdoor learning spaces, and all of our secondary schools will have additional outdoor seating and shading. So, updates here that we are adding some shade structures to some of the schools this summer through the bond work. And we have many schools asking to continue to build out gardens and outdoor spaces. So, we're working to connect them with community partners that can help and grant opportunities and supporting them where we can. So, it's still exciting to me to drive around to our schools and see so many more picnic benches and seating spaces that are out and being used in a way post-pandemic. That is great to see that momentum continuing. Our second goal here is to develop an ongoing annual communication strategy. So, we have a month-by-month plan to communicate out about sustainability. Again, a large focus this year was about the changes in compost, but also events like EcoTober that was in the fall. There is a community event in Lafayette this coming Saturday. For those of you who might have a chance to get to Earth Day every day, 10 to, right outside the Berger Lafayette Rec Center. We also have a new logo, thanks to Jade and the communications team. So, we're now in line with the BVSD logo. And our third and final goal here is to have continuous improvement and tracking systems for the model programs that already exist in our schools. So, green teams are just thriving in a way that brings me so much joy. You've heard from the students today, you heard from the student from Fairview, and these are just a representation of literally the hundreds of students that I've connected with this year doing this work. So, it's so exciting to see the momentum around this. Some of our schools have not only one green team, but three green teams. Did that energy audit last week at Fireside with 40 kids kicking off their four-day weekend by doing an energy audit of their school. So, really pretty awesome and exciting work. Three of our schools participating in our multi-state Renewer Schools Energy Challenge right now. Five of our high schools working with our food service department and EcoCycle to really focus on reusables. Trip Tracker, as of January, we had 39 schools participating in Trip Tracker. So, again, the list kind of goes on and on of the great programs that we have in place and continue to support. So, the plan is a living document that will and is continuing to evolve in response to our implementation and evaluation, and the work is now being overseen by our Sustainability Advisory Committee. So, thank you very much.
Board members, questions, comments? Lisa?
This is fantastic. And Gita, I just love how much energy you bring to all of this and you bring to all this work that we're doing. As a side note, we're doing Cowood next week for the first time, and I didn't know that that fell under this umbrella. So, that's really exciting. I do have two questions, one big and one little. So, my big question, when we're talking about the reducing emissions, you spoke about some of the things we're doing internally with school buses, but you also mentioned that this is also an external goal, working with our community. I know that we've talked in the past about different ways to incentivize biking and walking, which is something very close to my heart. And I'm curious what kinds of new things we're doing. I'm wondering if we're doing work to support bike and walk buses, if we're working with cities and counties on improving transit corridors and increasing safe routes, or what things you can tell me about what that community-facing aspect of reducing transmission emissions looks like?
The program that we have that incentivizes all the students that are getting to school in any way alternative to a single occupancy vehicle, so busing, walking, biking. So, that's one of our stronger programs. We do also a part of the Safe Walk to School program and look for grant opportunities. I think we are hoping to apply for a grant that will help us really understand how our students are getting to and from school. So, we can do things like bike counts or take surveys and things. But once we really get a sense of what are the modes that kids are using, then figure out how we can continue to support more students accessing through sustainable transportation, excuse me. I would also say that through the bond, we've done work to just generally make our schools more accessible when it's been relevant to the site planning work on the site. Do you have...
Yeah. Lisa, I'll just expand. We continue to look for grant opportunities. The city of Lafayette was just awarded a Safe Routes to School grant to make an area by Lafayette Elementary School safer to walk and bike to school. So, we continue to look at those in partnership with all of our different municipalities. So we continue to look at those in partnership with all of our different municipalities. We meet with City of Lafayette, City of Boulder, Boulder County on a monthly basis. This continues to be a topic of discussion, how we can make it safer to walk and bike to school. So it has our attention. We're giving it a lot of focus, really, you know, driven by the bus driver shortage, and it's not getting any better. So we have to encourage people to find alternative modes of transportation to get to and from school.
Thank you, Rob. I appreciate that. And I appreciate you saying the word safer with all of this. I think that's really what it comes down to, that folks who don't feel that they can bike and walk safely drive, and the more folks that drive, the fewer folks feel that they can bike and walk safely. And we end up in this, this cycle. So I know that this is something you all are working hard on, and I would just support very strongly any additional efforts. And as a smaller question, I know that Boulder City Council tomorrow night will be addressing leaf blowers, gas-powered leaf blowers across the city, and whether we'll be banning them as a city. I think there are a lot of great reasons why that is a good goal and something I support. I wonder if BVSD still uses gas leaf blowers, and if we do, if phasing them out is on the agenda?
It is now on my radar.
Okay, I'll take that. Thank you so much. I'm really excited about all of this.
Other board members? Kitty and then Nicole?
What exactly is energy use intensity?
Yeah. That's a way to normalize energy use. So, so? Can you hear me? Okay. So it's, it's kind of a way to do apples to apples and compare. So of course, our high schools use more energy than our elementary schools because they're bigger, but energy use intensity normalizes the energy use with the square footage. So it's a way to kind of compare across taking out that size piece.
Also, on the document that's on Board Docs, we can't see all the different charts and pictures.
Right.
Can we get that?
I'm sure that we can figure that out, yeah.
Kitty, I already texted Laura about that.
Okay, good. Because when they started changing, I thought, wait a minute, we didn't see.
The PDF freezes those, those images in one. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nicole?
Thank you for your continued efforts in this area. It's important to us as a school district and as a community. So I look forward to seeing how we, how close we get to meeting our goals in the future. Couple of questions. When we're looking at decreasing our water use and our energy use specifically, can you speak to where our highest utilization is and what specifically you're targeting to decrease those usages? I have assumptions, which I don't need to share, but I'm wondering if you could speak to that a little bit.
Yeah. That's a great question. So I would say we handle that in three different parts. So through the bond, as we're making upgrades, I mean, through the 2014 bond in particular, anytime we touched any of those systems, we moved to more efficient systems. So that is when we can make, when we have dollars to make those, we make improvements to the buildings to decrease energy in that way. Also behaviors and conservation efforts in the schools, like our amazing student teams doing audits and figuring out how behaviorally we can impact energy use is another big piece of it. So I've seen schools and student groups get super engaged, and they're able to drop energy use in their school by 20% just through making sure lights are off at the end of the day and turning off computers. So that's another way. And then the third way is just through our operational policies, so that making sure that we are using our centrally controlled heating and cooling system to make sure that buildings are not running when the schools are not in session, that we're, you know, being as tight as we can with those practices. On the IT side, the, you know, computers are not just on all the time or throughout the summer over breaks. Again, kind of what we're making equipment purchases, just ongoing operationally to making upgrades to lighting, that all of those are to more efficient technologies. So it's three parts of the equation. And, you know, with the utility data, we can start to target where our high energy users are and when that high energy use is happening. So we can hone in and try to figure out what's going on that way as well.
And with water usage, are you looking at how we water our exterior facilities, supporting facilities, upgrades and changes that we can make there to make those more sustainable? Other areas of water, minimizing water use?
Yeah. That's so, you know, outdoor water use, we saw a big decrease when we moved to our synthetic fields, but then we've seen more of an increase. I think we put in potentially more landscape through the last bond, but then kind of take some additional watering to get up to speed. So that outdoor, and you know, we've got Miles on board now who was tracking more closely our water bills and say, hey, something's wrong here, sends it immediately to our water team who can check to see if there's leaks, so just kind of staying more on top of that. Indoor water use, again, comes to the end users, a little less that you can do, but you can report things like leaking faucet in the boys' bathroom in the hall and things like that to, to help reduce. And the same thing, as we're putting in equipment through the bond or ongoing operationally moving towards more water-efficient fixtures is really just a standard now and makes a big difference in that water indoor use.
And lastly, I just wanted to say, Mike, children were heavy users of Trip Tracker, still are heavy users. And as they transition into middle school and take the skip, public transportation, that is something that they get rewarded for as well. And I wonder if that's something that we can do a better job of advertising to some extent. I think we think of Trip Trackers and as walking and biking, but public transportation is a big component of that. And how can we increase awareness on bus routes? I know it might not be for everybody, but where bus routes exist, RTD bus routes that are running continually, where can we really encourage utilization of those, particularly in some of our middle school areas where it might not be first, first and foremost as a go-to, but something well worth considering?
That's great. Thank you. Yeah. That's great.
I have a question that maybe, Rob, you can answer. Have we done all of the testing for lead in our water? And will we get a report on which schools, if they all passed, or where we are on that? You may not have the answer right now, but I'm just curious.
So, yes, and I sent the board an update on Friday.
And will we be?
So all of the testing has to be done by May 30th. And of, so far, we've tested 940 fixtures, of which 16 didn't pass. And I want to just remind the community, if they're listening to this, is EPA standard is 15 parts per billion. That's what it has been up to this year. When the state passed their new policy, it's five parts per billion. Out of those 16 fixtures, 15 were, one was a drinking fountain, the rest were, the other 15 were sinks. We've notified those communities. We've taken all those fixtures out of service, and we will retest those fixtures. So if we retest and they pass, we bring them back in service. If they don't, then we'll have to take that service out and address it. But all of that work has to be tested by the end of May. I'll continue to update the board as we.
Yeah, I just thought it was important for the public to hear that as well, kind of where we are on that. So for Dr. Carol, there was a slide, and I'm, I'm looking at the website, where you talk about we're doing this energy audit and trying to track our energy usage and all that. Is there a place that we can find that on the website, that we can kind of track that? Or is it not current enough? Or is it?
The students run an energy audit or the?
No.
Oh, the, the utility data? We can get that, yes. We'll try to make that more available. There's not a way now.
I figured it was kind of new.
On the website, but you can, I mean, we get requests actually all the time from schools and facilities, like what is our utility data? So we can send that to you really easily. It's not available online.
I think at some point, it would be helpful for schools to be able to track it and see it on the website.
Definitely.
And I know our sustainability report comes out April, so we'll probably get the one for April 22 pretty soon, and maybe I'll have some more of that current data.
Yeah. Yes. And that's what we're hoping to do with the sustainability snapshots, too, is, and schools really do like having that information and data and having it updated, so.
Yeah, and I just think it helps because, and when families go on the website, it can be kind of a community engagement piece, where they can look and see where their schools are and what their students can do and what we can all do as a community effort. So I think the work you're doing is just amazing, and thank you for everything, and congratulations on yet another award. You're going to need a bigger office, I think, pretty soon for all the awards that you're getting. But I think we're leading the, you know, many school districts across the state and showing what we can do with, with, you know, really positive and forward-thinking leadership. So thank you for all, to all of you for all the good work that you're doing. Anybody else? Rob?
I just want to take this opportunity to recognize and thank Miles and Gita and Dr. Carol for all of their work. This, we're not state leaders, we're national leaders in this area. We're well-recognized across the country for the work that started with an investment by the Board of Education and a focus on sustainability from a previous board. This is an annual update that you get that's embedded in board policy. These are longstanding values of our community, and just want to thank the board for their leadership. Thank the team. Welcome, Miles. Thanks to Rob, and just incredibly proud of, of the groundbreaking work we continue to do here in BVSD. So thank you.
Lisa, board members, any other questions before they head out? All right. Dr. Anderson, you want to do the next introduction?
Absolutely. Thanks, Board President Gettart, members of the board. 2024 preliminary budget. Board members, you saw a very similar, if not close to identical presentation in our work session last week. This is our information session to the public regards to where we are with our 2324 preliminary budget. I think Bill has made a few changes. He'll highlight those as he goes through this. At this time, I'll turn the presentation over to our Chief Financial Officer, Bill Sutter.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson, President Gettart, members of the board. This is nearly identical to what we walked through last week. The process that we've been doing for a number of years is to have the work session that we did last week and then move into the regular school board meeting so that there's more of a public presentation of the same information. So going through this as quickly as I can, we'll walk through the budget development timeline and milestones, the input we've received, enrollment, preliminary budget and next steps. So this timeline and milestones, this is a similar or the same format that we've used and actually reported on in this current year back in September and December. So I won't walk through all the detail, but just suffice to say that there are lots of opportunities for input at all the board meetings, as well as the data inputs that we're receiving even up to this date and going forward up through budget adoption. So the big red line is where we are right now. Oops, I jumped forward one. A little delay there. So, dang it. There we go. Just a couple of upcoming items that we have left. The legislature ends in a couple of weeks on May 8th, and then we have the proposed budget coming to the board on May 23rd. We do have the public budget input session at the board meeting right before, or at the work session right before the board meeting on the 23rd. So for budget development input, we are focusing on employee compensation, strategic initiative investments, particularly special education, bilingual education and the Grad Plus programs, addressing achievement gaps, opportunity gaps and disproportionality, as well as the ever-present inflation. And these will become more evident as I go through some of the numbers. So throughout the year, there are many, many, many opportunities for input into the budget development process. These are meetings, standing meetings, advisory committees, parent committees, the superintendent is visiting schools. And so there are lots of opportunities where input is collected in the budget process. These are not necessarily a meeting where it's advertised as now's your chance to come give budget input, but just generally, these are how the budget is developed, as all this information is collected throughout the year with a focus on the strategic plan. So next, just a little quick reminder of the public board meetings and work sessions that have happened over the last eight months or so, that again, are all sort of related to budget development, either specifically or have an influence on the development of budget. So we had a work session back in September where we had a current year budget update, as well as that milestones and budget development process, Unified Improvement Plan, Strategic Plan Metrics, Grad Plus Update, the Long Range Advisory Committee for Enrollment Impacts, Academic Return on Investment, once again, the budget development process and milestones and the budget outlook, enrollment updates, the draft strategic financial plan, and DAC presentation on their spending priorities, the revised budgets in January. Then we had our annual comprehensive financial report work session or the audit, and then finally, the work session on the second quarter financials and mid-year analysis as in, towards the end of March. So again, there are many occasions where the, the public has an opportunity to gather some information about the budget and, and financial developments throughout the year. Next, enrollment. So this is one of the places where we had a little change from last week. So I did update this slide to break out the difference between the K-12 enrollment and total enrollment, as we have had a change in how preschool is presented here. So just to pick out the fact that preschool is growing next year from what we're projecting, from what the program has been, it's dramatically changed and significantly different from what it has been in the past and in the current year. And so we are able to count more students as they enroll with us in the new Colorado Universal Preschool Program. And so there's growth in that area, which offsets the decline overall in enrollment in the general charter and online schools. So working into the preliminary budget, I'll walk through the General Operating Fund in quite a bit of detail, and then just make some summary of notable changes on other funds and next steps. So on the revenue side, an increase in the per pupil revenue of inflation, that was identified as 8% in the calendar year 2022, which is the inflationary funding increase for the fiscal year 2324. We do have an increase in our mil levy override that's targeted or indexed to total program funding. So that will go up by 25% of that increase in the net PPR change. Some increase in categorical funding, which is also required to grow by inflation. We do have budget stabilization factor buydown. This is $120 million statewide, and our portion of that is approximately 3.2%, as we're about 3.2% of the state overall. Specific ownership tax, which is the, the car registrations, we get a portion of that that's collected locally. Some funds the School Finance Act, so it's a portion of the School Finance Act revenue, and some of it is non-equalized, which is just additional revenue to the district. Interest rates are going up and have increased significantly, so we're increasing the interest earnings, and then some other small changes in net revenues. So this is where we see one of the impacts for the universal preschool program, in that we have a general decline in enrollment, but we're also moving the preschool students out of the general fund revenue collection because they are no longer counted in the School Finance Act, and they've been moved over to the preschool program, which I'll dig into a little bit later. And so that's about 350 FTE, or 350 students for preschool. Next, we have transfers. So charter schools receive their increase in funding related to the School Finance Act and overrides. And then this is the second change for the Universal PK program, where as the student count is declined in the general fund for the, the School Finance Act, we no longer transfer dollars out of the school finance, or out of the general fund into the preschool fund for those students. So the, and again, I'll get into that a little bit more in detail later. Next, we have compensation. So it's an 8% cost of living adjustment for all employees, steps, lanes and attrition, so that's movement on salary schedules, and then a health and dental increase, 5% premium increase for $29 million overall. This is a major investment to recognize the inflationary pressures that staff are feeling. Next, we have changes in expenditures. So as we see that decline in enrollment, we have our staffing formulas that are, which reduce the number of staff that we have for those. that we have for those standard staffing formulas. These are targeted at classroom teachers and paraeducators because those are the most straight-line identified as changes in student enrollment. There are certainly other changes in staffing that happen at individual schools that don't necessarily get reflected here, but as a school tips over one of the staffing triggers that might reduce a particular type of position or it might increase it in another school depending on where they're falling. We have additional student supports for three intensive learning center classrooms, so special education services, inflationary costs for utilities, information technology, athletics, and operations, and then some testing requirements, maintenance, and operations. This is related to that lead testing, one of the items that was mentioned, lead testing for water quality in schools. And then, under the, again, further changes related to the new pre-K model, as we are not reflecting those student counts in the general fund, we're collecting that into the preschool fund, so we're reducing the staffing that's in the general fund that has been historically captured there. Also, in the, just to mention the utilities again, as that was brought up in the last presentation, about 30% on a natural gas increase and 7% for electricity is what's driving about $1 million worth of inflation costs for utilities. So, as we roll out the new universal free school, or meals for all, we no longer have a line item in the general fund needed to write off the bad debt or the unpaid meal accounts. We have built in a increase in the substitute rate. This is adjusting the ongoing rate of pay up to $150. It's currently at 115 ongoing. We had sort of surge pricing, if you will, in the current year that was at 165. So, that is still a little bit of a reduction. We have the opportunity to make decisions going into next year if we want to continue any of that surge pricing, so to speak. But also, just to note, and it's been corrected online, but it was referenced that it was $150 an hour in the budget article in the Daily Camera. So, we got that corrected, but it's a daily rate, not an hourly rate. So, human resources, adding a position for our human really, our employee relations specialist, and then some other small adjustments for security, IT, and bilingual expansion. So, as a little summary, revenues increasing, ongoing budget balance available. So, we had, in the current year's budget, resources available on an ongoing basis. And then legislative action. So, there are two items that are moving through the process right now. This is increasing the reimbursement for special education and getting the state up to the commitment that they made, I believe, in the late 90s. And so, it is a reimbursement for the current expenditures that we're spending for special ed services. So, that is $40 million statewide, about 1.9 million for the district to, again, offset some of the approximately $50 million that we spend on special ed services. And then, a continued buydown of the negative factor, the budget stabilization factor. And it's increasing a little bit more than what we had built in here. We had another 30 million built in here in this presentation. It's been amended, the School Finance Act that was brought forward last week. It was amended to increase that by another 30 million. So, it's 180 million buydown of the negative factor instead of the 120 that the governor first presented back in January or February. So, that's moving through the process. And again, as I said, we've got a couple of weeks left, but it should stay as amended currently. Most of expenditure increases are related to compensation. Then we have those budget adjustments and transfers that are slight offsets. And so, we're still a little bit upside down in this summary of just changes. So, just to comment, same thing I said last week, this is not a scary place to be at this time. We are still working through the legislative process, and there's, you know, roughly $400 million worth of line items in the district's budget. And so, all of that detail has to get built and pulled together with these projected changes. And so, there's some opportunity to bring things into alignment as we finish this out in the next month or so. Onto one-time expenditures. So, we have our standard staffing reserve for those enrollment inefficiencies. We have our bandwidth support that we've, that we're continuing into next year that was started this year. Curriculum materials, literacy intervention, so the virtual intervention program, including bilingual. We're expanding it, so it'll include some bilingual education next year. And then, deans at three of the schools to continue some of the Marshall Fire support that's been occurring for the last year and a half or so. Next, moving on, some human resources recruiting. So, these are two half-time positions and one full-time position. This is continuing some existing support that's in there right now, focused on operational support, so food service, bus drivers, custodians, as well as, as we're trying to work our way through some of the transitions on the ERP system, getting backlogs flushed out and continuing that into next year. Information technology, continuing a 1.0 position that was prior funded on the bond. Communication support, translations, and department support. And then, some Grad Plus and CTE startup. So, in the current year's budget, the 2223 budget, we had put in three years' worth of funding for these programs. So, this is just recognizing that we're, we have the two additional years set aside going into next year. Continuing on the one-time expenditures, some miscellaneous program supports, ALPS, UVA, intensive learning centers, bilingual education, and the family, family and educators together teams. Security, some equipment, uniforms, and professional development. Some software, three-year plan for some software for curriculum support. Grad Plus programming, some stipends and software. And then, of course, we have to set aside our reserves taboring contingency of 3% and 4% respectively to set aside what's built into board policy. For transfers, one-time transfers, cap reserve fund, so some miscellaneous maintenance projects and equipment, as well as a reduction to the food service fund for the implementation of the Prop FF or the Free Meals for All. So, as that program is expanding, the need for support from the general fund looks like it will be less, but I don't want to build into the budget a permanent reduction if the, the participation doesn't ramp up as projected and collections and all that. So, this is just a recognizing that we might have a one-year transition, and if all the projections come to fruition, we can potentially reduce that on a permanent basis. So, a little summary of all the proposed one-time uses. It's a little bit upside down here right now, but we'll have the third-quarter projection done here in the next few weeks. And so, that'll help us identify if there's some additional resources available as well as on those reserves. Sometimes, we don't need all the reserves that are identified because there's some already built into the budget. So, again, it's that alignment of the, the detailed budget development versus just the summary of changes. On the other funds, so food services, as I've noted, the implementation of the Free Meals for All, little reduction on a one-time basis of the transfer, the reduction in per-meal collections because the reimbursement is less than the current meal prices, and then growth in participation due to the, or projected growth in participation due to the Free Meals for All. There still will be the requirement to enter in student PINs. It's not like the program that was in place federally for, during the pandemic. So, this will prove to be a little bit challenging, I think, as this gets rolled out. But, and we still need folks to apply for the free and reduced lunch on the forms. That is all part of the requirement to participate in the program. For community schools, there's expansion of their preschool enrichment program for the universal preschool programs, so it's both revenue and expense side. And then, also, the preschool fund, as I noted, as we roll out the brand-new, completely changed preschool program and structure. So, just a little quick summary of the change of what the, the budget from year to year looks like for the preschool fund. So, you can really see some of the transfer changes, how there's a reduction in that general fund transfer, tuition dropping because there's fewer students that will be participating in tuition because there's more students that will qualify for the paid hours through the state. The revenue side on the, I call it PPR. It's not the same as per pupil revenue in the School Finance Act. It is completely separate and disassociated and not connected at all, but it is based on a per pupil amount. Personnel, obviously, a large increase in the staff to implement the program. And then, on the non-personnel side, some changes in the transactional costs and the no longer paying for community sites as parents are able to choose those community sites to enroll their students just like they can choose the district. Cap Reserve Fund, as I noted, that one, one-time transfer of $1 million. And then, operations and technologies, some one-time expense for the enterprise casting software implementation and food service, finishing up the food service software implementation. Next steps. So, we have, as I've noted several times already, the legislative session ends here in a couple of weeks. Then, we have our proposed budget public input session right before the regular board meeting on May 23rd. And then, we'll have a study item for the proposed budget at that May 23rd board meeting, and then tentative adoption scheduled for June 13th. Any questions?
Lisa, do you have any questions?
I do not. Thank you so much, Bill.
Board members? Kitty?
I have a question. I don't know that it's for Bill. What do the deans do in relationship to the Marshall Fire?
You know, I think that as we've thought about ramping up the administrative support for families and for kids, I think a dean's job is multifaceted. They're helping with students that are becoming dysregulated, struggling potentially as they return back to school after the fires. I think they're helping with families, they're helping with teachers and supports, just an extra administrative bandwidth at those schools. I would say from my, from our school visits, the teacher roundtables, every school that had a dean this year begged to hang on to them for at least one more year. Board members, we know that some of the staffing that's on one-time funding has to come to an end, especially as we think about our enrollment continuing to decline, and I think people understand that. Having one more year to help support those students and families as they continue to move on from, from Marshall Fires was, was, was an investment we felt like was a smart investment to make this year.
And then, which schools have them? Is it like all Superior, all Louisville, or are there others?
Fireside, Coal Creek, and Superior.
Eldorado or Monarch?
Just our most impacted schools with the, that had the most impacted families. Very important caveat, that don't have assistant principals. You know, many of our small elementary schools don't have assistant principals, so it's the principal and counselor. And so, those that didn't have assistant principals, we added.
Stacy?
Yeah, it's not a question. It was just a comment that Bill had mentioned that with the free lunch program, we had mentioned that maybe they go through quicker because they don't have to put in their PIN. But Bill just said they will have to put in their PIN. So, just something for our previous discussion to keep in mind as we talk about those times.
And I just have a question, Rob. You'd asked us at the last meeting to send questions, and I think a couple of board members did, and I'm not sure they responded to. So, I'm curious what the process is for getting questions that we have now, given a few revisions. What the questions are, what's the process for that as we go forward?
I think that, that I did connect with board members who had some questions. I think that if there are questions that the board would have, they're free to ask those now or connect with me, and we can, we could follow up. But happy to answer those now or, or in follow-up.
One of the questions I had, you mentioned that some of our staff is on one-time money, but I don't think our community can appreciate which staff is one-time, which staff is not, making those decisions. And so, I'm just curious how we can be very transparent going forward as to how those decisions are being made. Which ones are school-based, which ones are district-based? What does that look like? Because as we have declining enrollment and reductions in staff, I think it's just going to be really important to try to communicate that so it doesn't look random or personal. I know it's not, but how's a, how's a family member supposed to know that that person was on one-time money and that person wasn't? And how are those decisions made?
I think we communicate the one-time staffing to the public within our budget presentation. And I think that we have multiple line items in our one-time dollars that, that, that really get to who's on one-time dollars and who isn't. And so, we have our staffing instructional reserve, right, which we use as a fund to be able to smooth out anomalies within our funding formula. So, it sits on top of our funding formula, and we use that primarily for teachers. We created another fund that, it's in the presentation as bandwidth support, but those are really targeted classroom, class-size reduction dollars that are being targeted in elementary schools with, for classes. I mean, if, board members, if you recall, this idea came from teachers last year during roundtables where that, where when class sizes were getting close to the limits, but a large number of students that were at risk, special education, emerging bilinguals, we were able to use those dollars as additional resources and articulated to the schools this one time. I think that in addition to the other staffing, we've got the, we have the dean positions that we've articulated, and we believe we have some mental health positions that are also on one-time dollars. And so, I don't know that there's a, a clear way for a school to know who's on one-time dollars and who isn't, nor is there a way to prevent communities from advocating for positions as the one-time dollars go away because they're seeing the impacts of those dollars. Again, you know, as we've made these decisions and made these decisions this year, again, one year further removed from the pandemic, one year further removed from the fires, I think the mentality that we took was that for this next year, given the feedback that we've received with the one-time dollars that we had available to us, we felt like continuing those investments as a recovery effort and a support effort made, made sense. But I do think that we're going to have to have deeper conversations as we get into the fall. And principals will have to have deeper conversations with their school advisory councils and with their PTAs and with their parent groups around what staffing will look like as these dollars go away. Schools know and understand, and employees know and understand if they're on one-time dollars because those are limited-term contracts, those aren't on continuing contracts. And so, the individuals know, the schools know, to the extent the parents know, it would have to be more intentional communications. And, and I think that that's an effort, a communications effort that we'll have to enter into next year.
And then, the same question around the Esser dollars because we funded some staff positions with Esser dollars, and as those dry up and go away, I think it's going to be really important to figure out how to communicate that. Because I understand, Rob, that the person on the contract knows what their contract says and the principal does, but I don't know how a parent would know. And so, I, I agree with you that in the fall, we're going to And so I, I agree with you that in the fall, we're going to have to be a little more intentional around explaining that so that people understand kind of all of the moving parts and what that looks like going forward.
Absolutely. I think we can provide additional training for principals as we think about their engaging their school advisory councils who by statute are, have input on budget and have budget conversations. I think that that may be one place we can do that. And then also every, every year based on projections is a year-by-year situation. And so as Bill shared with you, we reduced, reduced staff this year because we had less students, will continue to do that. By, I believe it was 1.8 million, we reduced staff this year. And as every, every time we have less kids, we have to reduce staff. And, and then so, but I think it's a communication effort and it's just, I think, a conversation that this board is prepping itself for. And I know that our leaders are prepping themselves for.
And I also think, and then Nicole, that it's going to be really important as we go forward for the communication to explain kind of what our role is and what staff's role is. It's not our job to say, "That principal shouldn't have let that person go and that person should be staying." That's not our job. But I think it's, so it's going to be really important to explain to the public what our, what our lane is and what your lane is and how all of that kind of goes together in the putting together of the whole budget.
Absolutely.
Nicole?
If I could add one thing real quick, though. Just also, on top of general fund one-time dollars, the reliance on grant dollars at the state level, anytime the legislature wants to do something, they don't fund it through ongoing funding, they tend to put grant dollars against it. And we are, our Director of Grants and Federal Programs, Bevalochek, is extremely excellent at getting grant dollars, but that, and sometimes they're for multiple years, but those are also one-time dollars. And sometimes those grants go away and they aren't renewed. And so that can create another challenge because the public generally wouldn't know whether a person was on grant dollars or regular general fund dollars or general fund one-time dollars. So, grants are challenging.
So I was going to put together an RFI bill before our next meeting to get a sense of how much of our budget's dependent on grant funding. I mean, it kind of stuck out at me when we were talking sustainability. It was like, "We're going to apply for grant for that, we're going to apply for grant for that, we're getting your grant for this." And so, and every, if anybody pays attention to our consent agendas, there's always grant funding and there's matches required. These dollars don't come oftentimes without some kind of local contribution as well. So that's not like it's money, to quote the dire straits, money for nothing. So.
I think it's tricky, right? As, and you know, as we have advocated down at the Capitol for less grants, just put money into schools' budgets, that hasn't been adhered to. And so if, if, if we have to change our way of thinking around, and some of these grants are recurring grants, and so you're never guaranteed. I mean, it just puts you in a difficult situation, right? You'd want to, if you, if you add something, you wouldn't want to have or have to say, "Well, this is going to go away," right? But as, as more dollars that are driven to education, let's think about two years from now, right? I mean, the, right now, the legislature's committing to buying down the entire negative factor next year if they hold to their 180. That's about another 120 next year. And then after that's bought down, what will be the commitment to add dollars to public ed? You know, you would, you'd hope that those dollars would continue to, to come and, and support us, but the, the reality of us surviving on grants and surviving on, and thinking about budgeting in ways that are more shorter term than dialed in long-term, you may, may be a reality as we think about moving into the future. But we'll continue to advocate, you know, we have been down, we could talk about this in our legislative update, we've been advocating pretty significantly to, for folks, especially in our delegation, and they've done a great job supporting us, to continue to buy down these, the negative factor. And we'll continue to begin to really look at what we spend, what are our priorities, what are the outcomes we're trying to drive, what are our contractual commitments, and using that as, as a really a lens to make sure that we're always providing a balanced budget and staying in the good financial state that we're in right now, which we saw the benefits of when we sold our bonds, which were, which was because you have a double A-plus rating, they sell quickly, they sell for premium. It's just a, it's a great signal to our community that we're great stewards of our dollars. And we'll just have to continue to hone in on that as our population shrinks, even though our needs may be increasing.
So I appreciate it might be complicated, and we wouldn't be able to put an exact dollar figure to it, but I think it's important for the public to understand just how much of our budget's grant-driven for advocacy purposes, if nothing else, as they talk to their legislators. So they understand that this isn't just on the margins kind of funding, this is important to our overall mission. So, and then Bill, you mentioned that we were funding a position that had been funded by prior bond funding too. So there's lots of like intricacies to this that I think that people need to understand. So Nicole, and then I have one more question.
Sure, thanks. So a couple of things. I appreciate the fact that we are making, where we are adding one-time dollars, it really is aligned to the work of the strategic plan. We are working tirelessly to address disproportionalities, access to opportunities, improving outcomes for all of our students. So I, I love the fact that this budget is aligned to the strategic plan. You mentioned all of the community groups that provide feedback on the budget. We don't have the opportunity to hear from a lot of those folks. We do hear from the District Accountability Committee. I pulled up their recommendations to us in, from January, and it says prioritize gaps in achievement and growth, so just particular around non-English language learners, special education groups, so, and MTSS and mental health supports. So we're doing that. When I'm in the community at schools, visiting schools, or when we do BVSD connects, nobody's ever, there's not a lot of talk about budget. There's a lot of asking for more people, and there is a budgetary tie there that isn't always addressed. And I've never once heard somebody say, "You know, we're just really heavy on staff, could you take a few away?" So I think, you know, I appreciate that we all, that the community and our teachers are, want, the feel for the desire to have more humans is really palpable. And I appreciate the conversation, getting ahead of some of these conversations, but when we have to make budgetary decreases that impact staffing, I appreciate the fact that we're getting ahead of that. As we are thinking about the ESSR dollars and how they've been spent, are we going to get a report on how, that can clearly articulate this intervention at this school really did improve outcomes and opportunities for, for folks in ways, so we can consider what we take away from those experiences, those, those one-time dollars over the past three years to improve the experiences for our kids in our schools in years to come? And then in addition to that, I'm losing my train of thought. So the AROI around some of those dollars that we're spending, oh, and then as we get closer to a neutral budget, are you going to be sharing with us with some more clarity other than big buckets, how you got there? Where the, the six and a half million in reductions are coming from? So when we see this presentation again, it is a little bit more clear to us where you found, found those dollars?
It'll be crystal clear. Yep. Bill, Bill and I will work to make sure that we present you a balanced budget. It'll be clear. I think to the extent that when we're able to deduct and conclude that interventions have created improved outcomes concretely, we'll be able to share that. I think that you'll see more themes. You know, we'll see, you know, we're in year two of the weighted differentiated funding, which was a mix of one-time dollars and ESSR dollars, a big chunk of ESSR dollars to support our highest need schools. We've seen growth last year with some of those investments. In some places, I would say it's a collective, the collective supports have had the impact as opposed to one, you know, being able to isolate the impacts. But I do think that we'll be able to pick up on themes and trends and be able to draw some conclusions in regards to that. But I don't know that I'll say, be able to say, "These are the 75 things that happened, these 40 worked, these 35 didn't." We'll just have to work with our program evaluation team to be able to get you that information. But as Bill re-presents the budget, which June, June 13th is what we're aiming for, the finalized budget, May 23rd for a study and then approval June 13th, we'll have all that information.
So what is our plan for the, May 23rd? We have proposed budget public input. So how do we advertise that to our public? And then how do we go about incorporating that comment into the budget since you're going to be doing the presentation right after the public input? So how do we let people know and how do we let them know they've been heard if, in fact, we are making changes that are responsive to that? Because this seems like, to Nicole's point, we don't get to hear all of the different committees' input into, you get, you might get to hear it, Bill, but we aren't at every one of those meetings. And so I'm just curious what this public input piece looks like and how do we advertise it? And how do we get people to, to come and then show that we're actually listening? And maybe, if we can incorporate, why are we not incorporating it? And if we can, what are we doing?
I would say that we would advertise it as we always do. We have our channels, you know, we've, just like today's meeting was advertised and we got, you know, new media coverage. I think that, you know, this year, even compared to years in the past, have done more, more community outreach and engagement, whether it's through our BVSD, connects through our school visits, through, you know, just the multiple numerous opportunities that all of our advisory groups have to meet with both board members and with staff. And so we'll continue to advertise. I would say that we've had pretty low attendance in the past. The budget hearing is, is an open meeting, so it's, it is a, it's something that, that we'll have, folks can sign up to speak specifically to the budget. The budget will be posted prior to that so they'll know what they're speaking to. The, the budget open meeting portion is on the 23rd. Is that, is that right, Laura?
Yeah.
Because that, that's when it would be, because it would be on study. And so, you know, I do think that, Nicole, to your point, when, when, when our community wants to give us in for, like, feedback on our budget, it doesn't come in dollars and cents. It comes in services and resources, right? Or requests for the systems to change and adjust that have dollars attached. And I think that we hear about that all the time. You know, we're not in, I don't go to a school without folks telling us what they could use a little bit more of and what's been helpful. Or I'll go to a community meeting where folks say, "Hey, you know, this is," it literally is embedded in the way that we approach community engagement, which is what's working, where can we do better? We get that information all the time, but it isn't budget-centric. And I think a lot of our public doesn't understand the budgeting process to, Kathy, to some of your earlier points, they don't understand what is a one-time dollar versus a recurring dollar. If you have money in the bank, why can't you just spend it? I think there's some complexities to that. So we'll advertise, we'll work with Randy if there's opportunities or ideas that the board has to, that they'd like to see us advertise that differently. We'd certainly be open to that. I do think that our community has a great deal of faith in the way that we, in how we manage our money, how we manage our bond money, how we manage our dollars. But I would say that the requests for budget don't come in dollars and cents, they come in, "We want this to happen or we want this improvement."
Any other questions for Bill? All right, thanks, Bill. Let's hope that the legislature stays true to the 180. All right, the last information item is legislative update. I'll turn it over to you, Rob.
Thank you, Board President Gephardt. Board members, we have been very active, I would say, over the course of the past few weeks advocating around this idea of budget. As the community, I'm sure, has heard us speak about or other educators speak about this idea of the negative factor, where 13 years ago, to balance the budget, the, the state took a large sum of money away from public education. And it's been 13 years, and they're within striking distance of paying that all back. The governor's original budget was 120 million. There were some proposed changes to the School Fin Act, Finance Act, that were, were supposed to be introduced that would have negatively impacted BVSD in, and would have compromised the ability for us to get all of those dollars back from the negative factor in exchange for doing some other priorities that, that certain legislators had. As we push back on that, we spent time with our delegation. I want to thank the members of our delegation for giving us time. We were down last, not yesterday, but the Monday prior, and met with most of our delegation. They were very receptive, they heard and understood our concerns. I think our lobbying team did a very good job of creating a compelling case. And we believe that, that the 120 million, which was at one point going to be 180 million and then was going to be 150 million, is back to 180 million, which will be a piece of the puzzle in balancing our, in balancing our budget. And so we're, I want to thank Bill, who spent half a day with me down at the Capitol and, and all of our legislators and Kathy and other board members who were able to weigh in and have conversations with individuals. And so that's been the big thing that's on our mind. In addition, we feel like the accountability bill is moving forward with, with really little opposition. We expect that to pass as is. And so then our challenges of board will be to, you know, potentially fill, fill some role on this task force so our voice could be heard as the state has a conversation around accountability and what does the future of accountability look like? And how do we fix some of the inequities and the challenges that are in our current accountability and accreditation systems here in Colorado?
And I just think when language matters, they're not really paying it back. They're trying to get to a zero number, but we will never get the money back that they took from us over the last 13 years. And I think it's really important, I got, many of us get emails from legislators that talk about how this is going to be full funding of education. And I think we need to remember that we remind our legislators that this is not full funding of education, that this is just paying back a debt that's owed, and they're not even paying that back. So, right? They're just trying to get that BS factor to a zero number, which doesn't mean that they've paid us back all the money they borrowed from us and from our children's future. So I think it's really important that we're careful how we talk about that. And then I don't know when we'll get, I know that, I think Tanya's scheduled to come on May 8th, but I think that they could actually still be meeting because they don't have to do sinai di until like midnight that night. So I'd like to get, figure out when going forward, we could get a little bit more of an update on some of the other current issues that have been going on, including the executive session legislation. I think that's been a really hot topic, and they've made some pretty significant changes to it. So I think it would be really good for the board to understand what those changes are. So maybe I'll bring it up at agenda setting that we could figure out what kinds of updates we can get on the legislature and some of the other non-monetary or non-directly monetary issues that have come forward.
Are you thinking we change the date from when Tanya comes to present to the board? Because typically she would give that update, but you're saying the May 8th might not be, might be too early?
She might still need to be down there hanging on to school finance, who knows? I addressed that date with her, and that's the date that she recommended. I threw out one other date. I proposed another date that was later in the month of May, and she said that was not as optimal as the May 9th date. So I can always visit with her and see if there's another option.
We can work on it.
Yeah, I just was thinking, there's other important legislation that's come out this session that I think could be really helpful, especially like I said, around the executive session changes and some of the charter schooling changes. And then the, in the School Finance Act, whether the adequacy study actually gets through. So there's still a lot of moving parts that we may or may not know by May 8th. It's just really hard to know. So that was my only question. So board members, is it all right if we take a quick break before we move into the rest of the board meeting? So let's try to keep it under 10 minutes if we can. I'd like to call this meeting back to order. The next item is the, our action items consent grouping. 7.1 Personnel Item, 7.2 Approval of Minutes, April 11, 2023, Special Meeting. 7.3 Approval of Minutes, April 11, 2023, Regular Meeting. 7.4 Approval of Minutes, April 18th, 2023, Special Meeting. 7.5 Acceptance of Donation, Eisenhower Elementary. 7.6 Acceptance of Donation, Instructional Services and Equity. 7.7 Amendment to the Construction Manager General Contractor Contract for Bond-Funded Construction at New Vista High School. 7.8 Approval of Proposed Fees, Changes and New Fees. 7.9 Award of Contract for District-Wide Waste Removal Services. 7.10 Award of Contract for Waste Divergent Services, Environmental Education, Composting and Recycling. 7.11 Resolution 23-10, Non-Renewal of Licensed Contracts. 7.12 Advanced Studies, Gifted Education, Universal Screening and Personnel, Colorado Department of Education. 22 Grant, Advanced Studies, Gifted Education, Universal Screening and Personnel, Colorado Department of Education, 23. 713 Grant, Strategic Partnerships. 21st Century Learning Centers, Colorado Department of Education. And 714 Grant, Student Services, High School Wellness Centers, Colorado Behavioral Health Administration. Administration. Board members, first, is there, are there any items that board members would like to pull from consent grouping? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Moved by Stacy, seconded by Kitty. Any discussion on the consent agenda items? Kitty?
I don't really have discussion, but I would just like to thank the Boulder Bookstore for generously donating a number of books for our Instructional Services and Equity Department.
Lisa, do you have any questions or comments on the consent agenda?
No, I was shaking my head. Maybe you can't see me.
No, we can't see you. Now we can, now we can't. I have one question, Rob, and that is on the timing of our non-renewal of licensed or certified teachers. I know that many districts have already, they go much earlier than we do, and so that our teachers are being kind of released when many of our partnering school districts have already done their hiring. And I would just hope that going forward, we could look at maybe moving that timing up because as we continue to contract and as we continue to have to release some teachers, I just think it's fair to those teachers if we could actually let them go when there's more jobs that are being open along the front range. So I would just hope that maybe we can talk about that sometime going forward. So, Nicole?
I noticed this week and the last meeting, there were quite a few 110 announcements for 110 retirements or resignations. Can you share how that impacts our staffing allocation when we get those or into the future? How does that work?
In regards to funding or in regards to?
In regards to funding. And then do we know when that timestamp is up, when they announce a 110?
Yep. Dr. Hill, if I get any of this wrong, just run up and correct me. But when somebody puts in for a 110, that's for one year only, and then after the 110, then they have to formally retire and enter in para. No? Yep, yep, come on.
So they'll put their retirement in and then the following year will be their 110 year. So it's like they're contracted out.
Does that answer your question? So it's an official retirement, once upon retirement, then they're able to apply for the 110 through the district?
Correct.
All right, any other questions about the consent agenda? All right, Laura, could you call the roll, please? Garcia?
Yes.
Gephardt?
Yes.
Niznik?
Yes.
Raj Paul?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Zess?
Yes.
Motion passes. The next item on our agenda is Policy Action Items and Consent Grouping, including 9.1 Board Policy IJ Instructional Materials Selection and Adoption, 9.2 Board Policy KB Family and Community Partnership, 9.3 Retirement of Board Policy EDBA Maintenance and Control of Instructional Materials and EDBA/R, and 9.4 Retirement of Board Policy KCB Community Involvement in Decision-Making. Are there any items board members would like to pull from the consent grouping? Stacy?
I'd like to pull Board Policy IJ. I believe that's supposed to be on study, not on action.
Any others that board members would like to pull? We have a motion and then see if there's any discussion. Motion to pass without the IJ. Moved by Nicole, seconded by Beth. Board members, any conversation on our Policy Action Items Consent Grouping? Lisa, I can't see you, so I'm just going to ask.
No, and I was ready this time for the question, so I wasn't shaking my head.
Okay. Any other board members, any questions on this grouping of policy? All right, Laura, could you call the roll, please? Garcia?
Yes.
Gephardt?
Yes.
Niznik?
Yes.
Raj Paul?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Zess?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have Policy Study Items. We have two policies to study this evening. The first is Board Policy AE/AE/R or -R. Kathleen, I think the floor is yours.
Thank you. Board members will recall that this item was discussed in a recent work session. We are moving forward and implementing input that we had from the DAC committee. It is several years in the making. I believe that the last time the board looked at this policy, that most of the language had been agreed upon. There is a remaining question about the inclusion of at-large members in the regulation, which is AE-R. So we brought this item back for study to give the board another opportunity to discuss this item. The language about at-large members as the brief that was provided by our DAC co-chair, Chris Haynes, explains that the at-large membership has been in the DAC bylaws for a number of years. He targets it at 2010. That was actually added to the DAC bylaws, so it has been in place in the school district for a number of years. It has never been incorporated into board policy. And to the extent that the board wishes to support continuing with at-large members, we do need, I believe, a policy foundation. The language is at the top of page two. It is new language, which is why it's redlined. And after the board's last meeting, I struck that language because I was not sure if there was board support for adding it. But because it had been something that the board was really focused on, I left the language there and then in the agenda item to facilitate the board's discussion.
So we have board discussion? Stacy?
Yeah, I'm still opposed to having at-large members. I'm just, I don't understand the need to make it a bigger group. I don't believe that current membership supports that it makes it more diverse when I looked at the at-large members. I don't understand why people who apply to be at-large just can't go to their school and be on the SAC and then perhaps be the DAC rep. I don't understand any of these things. So I don't, I'm not in support of it. I haven't been since the beginning, but now that I see that the reason for it to make it more diverse is actually not happening, makes me uncomfortable that it's been the practice but not in our policy. It's not part of the state statute for at-large members for DAX. That's not part of it. So I'm opposed.
Yes, I am also still opposed and basically exactly for the reasons that Stacy just mentioned. I think we were told that this would support diversity goals. Stacy asked if there was any clarity around whether it had in the past. We were given a breakdown that showed that 100% of membership, I believe to date, has been entirely, well, that there have not been a single person of color who is a part of this group. I'm not sure how that supports our diversity goals, and I continue to think that this is not something I'll support.
I have a couple of questions on this. The state statute doesn't require, right, that DAX represent the communities they represent or in terms of representation of the communities. Does that mean, for example, if you have 20% of the student enrollment is represented by Latino students, and then you have a DAC that does not meet that particular threshold, then what's the leeway? What can, what can the board do to make sure that that representation does get there?
So I want to make sure I understand your question, Board Member Garcia. So the question is, what does the law provide around at-large or representation and what should the board do?
No, that's not my question. My question is that the law requires that DAX be representative of their communities. So if that requirement says that, if I'm interpreting this correctly, that you have a DAC and you have a community, a Latino community that constitutes about 20% of the student enrollment, however, the DAC representation does not constitute 20% of the, that particular population, then what leeway do we have as a board to make sure that that representation does get back up to what it should be?
So the law does say that the school board, to the extent practicable, shall ensure that the parents who are appointed reflect the student population significantly represented. Candidly, I think that what you're asking is a really hard question. The process is, we bring forward the DAC membership and the board approves it. So I think that we can advertise, we can encourage, we can do many of the efforts that are underway now to encourage our parents to step forward to be a part of the DAC or their school accountability committees. I suppose the board could decline to approve DAC members. That's very significant action, I would suggest. It's hard to compel people into public service. So I think it's a hard question. Those are my thoughts about it.
But is that the rationale that DAC had in 2010 when they wrote it into their bylaws? Is to assure that representation would be there? If they didn't get, after all of the work that we do in terms of advertising, blah, 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 we still don't get that representation? And if we don't get that representation by that process, then that at-large membership, I think, makes sense to me.
I would agree, but I don't understand why someone would be compelled to be an at-large member when they weren't compelled to be a SAC slash DAC member from their school. So I'm confused about that.
Well, maybe they're not members of, maybe they're, maybe they're community members without kids in school.
Well, there, isn't there, aren't there other members that are community members on DAC that are separate from these at-large members? Because I know there are on SACs, correct? So there's already community members built into what DAX are supposed to be, exclusive of the at-large members. The at-large members were separate. There's community member, there's community members allowable on DAC as per state statute.
So if we do all of this and yet we still don't have that representation, and we don't have any leeway in terms of the policy to be able to appoint members to make sure that that representation does exist, then what happens?
Is there an answer to that?
I thought it was more rhetorical, but I think the answer...
I did too, but I was just gonna...
No, I think the answer is if you approve a slate that doesn't include the representation that the board is seeking, then that, I believe, would be the purpose of the at-large membership as it was presented to the board on a recommendation from DAC. It is a way to attempt to diversify DAC if it isn't already.
Nicole?
So in the brief that the DAC presented, they are explicitly stating that DAC's goals and these revisions was to acknowledge that some parents and community members could make meaningful contributions to DAC but may not be able to commit the time and resources required to serve on both SAC and DAC. They also say that the current at-large membership helps DAC contribute to representation of Latino students, students with disabilities, and gifted students. So that is their intended purpose. I think it's really hard, you know, we can't, to, to Kathleen Salvin's point, we can't force schools to provide, you know, a member of the Latino community or a parent that is part of free and reduced lunch. That's a hard place to manage in schools, and that would be the opportunity, if this at-large membership did not exist, to do so, the board could potentially act. But that's, it's challenging. So I think there are challenges that exist to participation with that SAC requirement that not everybody might, not everybody will be able to make all of those meetings. And the brief states that, for those reasons and because, I think, for those reasons, I would really like to continue to provide the latitude as they seek to have a representative board. It's something they've been criticized for over the years about not being represented by this board. If they are trying to make a good faith effort in that, and this is the only way they can feel they can do that, I would advocate for it to remain a policy so it doesn't become, or not force the removal of a practice.
Lisa has her hand up too, but I have a question. How is the at-large membership different than the community members? Why can't that representation be part of the community member representation that's already in statute? I don't understand that.
The statutory requirement for community membership is one individual.
Okay, so there's a lot here. Two things. First, I appreciate that Nicole was reading from the memo. I want to point out that one of the concerns I had around this conversation is that representing the Latino community is listed as something that DAC membership does, but the by-member breakdown we were given does not actually show that. So I'm not sure what that disconnect is. The second thing I wanted to address, some of the things Richard was talking about. So my recollection when this first came up is that we were told that the goal of the at-large membership was to make sure that folks who might otherwise need to leave their DAC, their school community for some reason, could stay on as a DAC at-large member. And at that time, my recollection is that I said that that gave me some pause, that it gave me some concern, because when we are working to retain folks who are already in these structures, it's less likely to add to diversity and more likely to ensure that power and conversations are held in the hands of the same people that have always been in charge of those conversations. And at that point, we were told that it does add to diversity, and that was what started this conversation, which it feels like to me, we have now shown it does not. So I'm confused why diversity is coming in. I'm confused why it's being asserted as part of this process. Certainly, I agree with Richard that, I think everybody is saying the same thing, that if that were what this was doing, it would be fantastic, but it's not what it's doing. It's not clear to me that it was ever the goal for what it should be doing, and I don't understand why we would hang on to a process that is either not meeting its stated goals or that doesn't understand what its stated goals are and claim that that in some way helps our diversity initiatives.
Lisa, I think you raised really good points. I think we've tried this and it has not worked, and why we would continue to go forward with the policy that we've tried and has not worked to fulfill what its ever-changing intention is, doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. So Kitty?
So I have a question, and it's not really about what we've just talked about, but at the top of page two, with the, you know, with the language that was all stricken about the at-large member, the last sentence is still there, and it says, "The number of parents appointed to DAC shall always exceed the number of representatives from the group with the next highest representation." I don't know what that means.
That statement is required by law. It's required by law that the DAC always have the highest number of parents. Their members must always be majority parents. So that language really does work in concert, I think, with the at-large language above. That is what we're talking about.
Thank you. Now I understand it.
Stacy?
Do we need to have a motion to vote on this one thing so that we can move on? Or how does that work? Just come to some consensus or this is just study? How should we proceed?
So this is a first for me, at least in the district, where we haven't had clear consensus. We have not had a practice... We have not had a practice of voting between study and action. So as much as I am reluctant to sort of change the way we might have done things, it probably makes sense to bring back some alternate language when the policy is presented for action, and then the board will be able to vote at that point. This is really the one issue, I believe, that remains in discussion.
So you would have two policies, one that had at-large and one that didn't? Okay, okay. Thank you.
And I would like to just note, Chris Haynes was not able to be with the board tonight. I know he would have liked to provide some public comment, and has been instrumental in our ability to really bring the DACs thinking forward. So I know that he'll be joining the board at the next meeting. This will be back for action, and we can have two clear options. That would be my recommendation.
Everybody all right with that? Lisa, does that make sense?
It does.
Okay. All right, so then we'll move on to the next. The second policy we have on study tonight is Board Policy KB Family and Community Partnerships. Again, Kathleen, I'll turn it over to you.
I think our other policy on study is Board Policy IJ. That's our Instructional Materials Policy. I had a little bit of cleanup to do from the last time, but again, we talked about this one in the work session. So IJ has a couple of specific changes. I think that we wanted to make sure that the language around, around making sure materials are culturally responsive, that we have quality translations, and that we make sure that our teams check in with CDE about their regulations or their list, either as they currently exist and then as they're proposed, as much as we can read into that crystal ball. So those are the revisions that were made. This item is on study, and then will be moved for action at the next meeting.
Board members, any questions or comments around IJ? Lisa?
No.
Okay. That's clear enough? And then do we have KB, Kathleen?
KB was adopted as part of the consent grouping.
Right. It's just on my agenda here in the wrong place. All right, so board members, at this time, are there future agenda items that we would like to raise? Lisa, any for you?
No.
Rob, I'm going to renew my request that we get an update on UPK. I think that this is the week that some of the allocations might go out, so I'm thinking there's going to be some concern in our community when maybe they aren't getting matched to their schools. And I just think there's still a lot of ongoing concern around SPECT and UPK. So I think if we could get an update sometime in May on that. I think it's concerning for parents that it's already almost the end of the school year, and they don't know where their kids are going to be going to preschool next year. Not our fault. We're doing the best we can, but I just think an update for people to understand that would be really helpful. Any other items for the good of the order? All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Moved by Kitty? I think we stand adjourned until May 9th. Is that right? All right. Stay dry, everyone.